Bell.
It is. Sounds like a fire bell.
It does.
Thank you.
They need something more polite, like a ding dong ding dong.
Welcome. Let's begin tonight's meeting. This is the Town of Norfolk zoning board of 2024 in accordance with the provincial mass general law, chapter 30A, section 20. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals is meeting tonight, Wednesday, May 22, 2024, 7:00 PM, in the town hall meeting room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. So thank you all for joining. We appreciate your attendance, and we are almost ready to get going. We can't do our first hearing until 7:05. So I do have a question. Joe, the select board has to appoint you again. Are you willing to run for another five years?
Five-year appointments again?
It's a five-year appointment, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think they are.
No, I thought that...
I could be wrong.
I thought there were three. I think it's three.
Yeah.
Well, I've been going on five, so.
He said yes to five, so I think that's a commitment.
Are you okay?
I'd like to stay on the board, of course, but I don't want to stop anyone if they want to just juggle our positions if that's important to anybody.
We also...
Courtney, you're up for a year. You want to do another year?
I thought I just was re-upped for...
I don't know. They sent me...
Doesn't I just re-approved again?
No.
I thought I finished somebody's term as...
Yours is annual.
Yours is annual.
Oh, all right. Yeah, I guess.
And Mike's is annual.
Correct.
It comes and goes so quick.
It does. It says...
It's a three-year term.
It's a three-year term?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Says please find the zoning board determinations are expiring in June of 2024. Joe, Courtney, and Michael Brogan. Michael was just appointed, so.
Yeah.
Right.
He won't be here till noon.
Okay.
So like I said, I mean, I'd love to stay on the board. And I'm saying that for some reason, though, someone who wants to step up higher than an associate member, you know, that we could always discuss that at some point if we want to, you know, make that juggle around sometimes, depending on what's important to the associate members.
I'm making a big old no. I can't speak for our new friend.
Okay, that's fine.
For me, that's a big old no. We know that I enjoy the non-voting position.
Okay, then let's...
I'm here to pine.
I'll roll the dice.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the board that we have.
Will you let the select board know?
Yeah.
I would even think, I can't imagine Mike not wanting to serve longer for another year, so.
Yeah, we'll check in with him, and then we'll send it along.
I mean, I think his month-long tenure was a blast.
He came last time. That was great.
Yeah, you're right.
And then, um, and then we will, after the June, July, or I suppose you could do in June, to reorganization if you want to reorganize or not.
Okay.
In terms of officers, but.
Yeah, that's kind of what I meant. I do know that sometimes we leave the organization of the board, but that's fine. We always do.
Yeah. But we don't have it on tonight. We could put that on for June.
Good.
I was thinking five years. Because I thought I just, like, signed my life away. That's why I thought.
No, there's no out, though. It's not an out for you.
There's no... Well, at the end of five, I could say.
No, you didn't sign your life away.
Do we need to send anything to the selectman asking to be reappointed? I can't remember.
Yeah, we will.
I was gonna, I was gonna send...
I can't remember.
I was gonna send an email response saying that they...
A form, or if I just have to say, please?
No, we could send on your behalf if you want to up for another year, and then we'll just check in with Michael. Presumably, he does, we'll say the associates want to go up for another year, and they're willing to continue.
Sure.
And then, uh, go from there.
Yeah.
It's gonna be chaos.
You can decide next year, Mike. I'm not Mike, sorry. Dave.
Dave.
David. Yeah.
Bob.
Uh, why did I say Mike? That's totally...
Mike.
I don't know where that...
Mike's not even here tonight.
Do you have a brother, Mike?
No.
Sorry.
So we made it. We made it to 7:05.
Wait, wait. It's 7:05. Very good. 68 River Road. Variance is to construct a home in the floodplain protection district, continued from 424.
There's no formality open.
No, you already opened the meeting.
We're already open?
Yep. Now you can get into...
We will let you have a microphone if you wouldn't mind. That would be great.
Sit here?
Absolutely.
It's pretty much required.
Unless you'd like to stand, you can sit.
They're just teasing it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and general public. My name is David Sadowski. I'm the principal of DJ and Associates, and I'm here representing 36 Thayer Street LLC. I also have an attorney, Adam, who is, I believe, online, who will, at some point, interject if needed. To start, about two and a half years ago, we started on this project on River Road. The first thing we needed to do was soil test to see if we had an area that'd be suitable for a septic system, because there's no sense going any further unless we can actually have a place for disposal of effluent. So we needed the wetlands flagged. We needed the riverfront flagged, and then we were able to find an area to soil test. We soil tested, and we found models at 96 inches. So the septic system is completely underground. It will not cause a raise of any increment in the flood zone. After that, we started considering construction design. At first, we had an envelope that was about 8,500 square feet. When you get above 5,000 square feet, you're subject to, in the performance standards, you're subject to wildlife habitat restoration. Your different studies come about. We ended up crafting our area down to 4,600 square feet, which put us below the 5,000 threshold. We have 1.09 acres of property in a peninsula-like shape. During the soil testing, though, we noticed that there was different types of soil that were there. There were silts. There were clays. We were on a terrace section of an active floodplain above that area, along with those silts and clays, if I could put my glasses on, I guess. You know, we found some pockets of gravel. We found stones. We found different things along the way. So what we did was, when we brought the building in closer, because in that area, it's 50-foot setback from the roadway, and we didn't want to have to come for a variance for setback, to be, we built up to the 50-foot line, which was really tough because we had riverfront.
I think the plan, yeah, the plan is up here on the screen. We had, if I could go...
Your points. Please follow it.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
There it goes.
It was there.
Wow.
So the edge of the wetland is here. It surrounds us in a peninsula. Property is here, and our property is here. This is a land courted piece that was created in 1945, prior to any zoning in this town or even in Massachusetts. And it's been locked in land court since that time, and it hasn't changed hands. The owner over here and the owner over here have never been the same as the owner here. So there's never been a piece cut out of it, and there's never been a chance to put a piece in. Actually, right now, Conservation Commission owns 50 feet this way on the side of the property. So anyways, we have the edge of the delineated wetland. We have a 50-foot offset line. We have an inner riparian of 100 feet from the actual Charles River, which is out further. Then we have a 200-foot outer riparian, where part of the house is in. But with the 50-foot, if we can go up a little bit more, we start to show the 100-foot buffer, which a little bit of the structure is in over in this area. Here we go. So the limits of work that we're proposing would be this straw wattle erosion control barrier that would be put in, in this area. The septic system can go in this area here where we're 96-inch models all the way down, and we can put the building up against it because the house is going to be elevated on piers. It's going to be eight feet above the existing ground. The floodplain will come three to three and a half feet up if it's a theoretical 100-year calculated storm. That's never happened. But if it does, we will still be five feet above that. Part of Massachusetts' building code, to be water-resistant from the 100-year flood, you need to be one foot above the projected with your lowest horizontal member. We're above that. We're not proposing a garage. We're driving under. So we only have 21 pilings holding this house up, so the septic system can go right next to a piling. The requirements for a septic are 10 feet off a slab foundation and 20 feet off a full foundation. We have neither. So we're able to incorporate and disturb even less area and keep it up in the area of the roadway up here. There's town water right here. There's poles for overhead electric, and we'll have a septic on site. So there'll be no well that has to go in. We will not disturb any more of the site than the area that's shown here, and we have 150 feet of frontage, and that frontage has been there. I know that Mass. State Building Code is 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet. Your code for the R2 is different than that. That's an existing area that we're part of, and being in the R2 zone, you can have a single-family house by right, although we are in the floodplain. So anyways, we've been, we've been through about a year and a half to two years of conservation meetings to get to this point, going through performance standards. We had an outside peer review by Beta Group. I don't know if this board has ever used Beta before, but they came in and they reviewed my calculations, or my company calculations, I should say, to see if we, we talked about the horizontal dispersment of the 100-year floodplain because of the fill we're going to put on site. And our only fill is 21 pilings. It's 16 cubic feet. It's less than half a cubic yard. They found that it was miniscule compared to the size of the whole floodplain at the elevation of 137 to 138. That's NAVD-88. The area would go across the old, there's a, there's a walking trail over there for dogs now, but it used to be an airport way back in the 1910, 1920s. And that whole area, the flood would go over River Road and everywhere else. Anyways, they came up with the same thing we did, that less than 0.02% disturbance would happen as a result of us putting 21 pilings. Because since we're completely in the flood, we have no land that we could dig down to offer, uh, to offer as a respect, or to offer as something that we could do to mitigate putting the pilings in. So we, we do have a site now. We feel that, you know, we have a peninsula-type shape. We're surrounded by wetland. We have all different types of soil in our, you know, in our, in our group. The topography runs from 137 down to the river. There's steep banks that are on our property that make it, make it a unique piece of property in the R2 zone and also even in the floodplain zone. There's 16 other houses that are along River Road that were built prior to, I guess, floodplain, that were cottages or whatever, and they're in existence down in that area. Lark Road is also in that area, and all of them are in the 100-year flood. I believe, actually, there was a, a letter was submitted to the board in support from someone that lives at, I believe, 5 Lark. Maybe that can be read later. Anyways, the project will comply in all respects with the flood-resistant construction requirements of the Massachusetts Building Code. That's one of the things. We're going to be five feet above the floodplain. We found that the different types of unique topography, because we've had deposits from thousands and thousands of years of flood that have come through and have left different types of soils all through our site that were so challenging. Having the silt, having the clay, having areas that had clumps of different material. There's a lot of pine in that area. There's a lot of sap. There's phosphorus that's come down. There's, there's a vast amount of trees that would be untouched on the land. There's, you know, the people, I believe, when they cut these lots out in the 40s, they were to be able to have, enjoy nature and also be able to enjoy the water of the Charles River, to have kids learn how to boat, how to raft, how to do different things like that, and then learn about, in the wetland area, learn about frogs and learn about different things that inhabit. It'd be good for fishing. I think it's, it's a good site. It'd be a nice place to grow up as a kid. But I do think it's unique that it's a peninsula that goes out, that's surrounded by wetlands. We've worked the plan as best we can to get it as tight up against the bank. So the shape is a peninsula, the topography, everything goes from this edge here, 137 to 124, so it's always on a constant slope going towards the water.
All right. I'm running out of oxygen.
David, this is Adam Brodsky, Chair of Oxford. Can you hear me, sir?
I sure can.
Well, thank you very much. Would it be appropriate for me to just speak for a few minutes regarding the zoning issues?
Yeah, regarding the zoning, that would be great.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Adam Brodsky, and as David said, I also am working with the applicant. I'm an environmental and land use lawyer with an office in Hingham, and David reached out to me because I have extensive experience with permitting projects, particularly in floodplains. Although I have to admit that I was not familiar with either your zoning code or your floodplain regulations, so I submitted a public records request to the town clerk to get copies of all of the floodplain bylaws and regulations so that I could better understand the history of floodplain regulation in the town. And I also reviewed the title to the property. And, and I'm just going to touch on the high points of my letter dated May 2024, which addressed those issues. So regarding title, and David has already testified to this, the key takeaway is that the property has the benefit of the single-lot exemption under 48, section 6, paragraph 4, and section 310, 5.2 of your zoning code. And as David indicated, the property has been held in separate ownership since prior to the adoption of zoning, which I understand was in 1953. As such, it's exempt from any increase in lot area, frontage with depth or yard, excuse me, yard or depth. And interestingly, I'm not aware of any cases which discuss the application of the single-lot exemption to floodplain zoning, but we're not asking for the exemption here. This is an application for the variance. But I thought it important for the board to understand that the lot is otherwise buildable under the single-lot exemption. The second key takeaway, at least the takeaway that I have, is that your floodplain regulation, code, is, I think, less than clear in certain respects. In reviewing prior versions of that bylaw, I understand that the board could grant an exception or special permit to allow construction within the floodplain. However, if I understand the chronology, the code was amended in 2021, which eliminated the special permit path, and as such, an applicant is required to obtain a variance for construction within the floodplain. In order to obtain a variance, the applicant needs to satisfy the requirements of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 10, the state, as well as the requirements under your zoning code, which are fundamentally the same. And more particularly, David has addressed each of these elements in the application and also submitted an addendum A, which is attached to my letter as exhibit 5, to provide more detail on each of the required elements. And I just want to again highlight a few key facts, many of which David has spoken to. But first, within the R2 zoning district, a single-family dwelling is an allowed use. As I mentioned, second, the property has the benefit of the single-lot exemption. Third, as David explained in detail, the Conservation Commission is, has issued or will be issuing an order of conditions confirming that the project meets the well-in-performance standards specifically for work within the floodplain. It's considered bordering land subject to flooding, and the project provides the required compensatory flood storage. Fourth, as David indicated, the board has approved an onsite septic system under Title V. And five, I think importantly and relevant to your concerns, as David mentioned, the project is designed to comply with the flood-resistant construction requirements in the Massachusetts Building Code, which incorporates FEMA standards for construction, particularly within the FEMA AE flood zone. And as David indicated, the project and the house are designed to elevate the habitable space well above the base flood elevation with parking below. I would note that we do not need a variance from the state building code for construction of this project in the floodplain, because it complies completely with the state building code and FEMA requirements for construction within the AE zoning district. Floodwaters in the event of a 100-year storm event will pass beneath the building, and as David has articulated more clearly in the submittal, there's no public safety threat to either the occupants of the dwelling or to neighboring properties.
Attorney Brodsky, if you don't mind, we did have the benefit of having your memo in advance. Can you summarize what you are requesting specifically in terms of relief from this board tonight?
Yes. Well, thank you. And I'm sorry, I don't know who is speaking. Please.
My name is Courtney Starling.
Thank you, Ms. Starling. Thank you. We're seeking a variance for construction within the floodplain. That is the only zoning really we need in order to obtain a building permit for this project since we have obtained all other approvals.
So it is your position and the position of building that you are not here for frontage or any waiver you have? We have agreement there? I'm just double-checking with staff that we have agreement on the first issue. So this is really just about floodplain?
That's correct. I am not speaking to the building commissioner with respect to any other zoning concerns.
I just wanted to make sure that I knew which, which, since you've, you know, I just wanted to make sure that I was listening in the right context for review.
Yes. No, thank you. That is correct. The only relief needed in order to construct a single-family dwelling in this property is, is a variance from your floodplain regulations.
And what would, just out of curiosity, this is a planner question for you, but it's my understanding that the purpose of zoning is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And the purpose that we have, the reason behind floodplain regulations is because that derogates from the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We could look at that from several aspects as to how it does so, whether it is, let's say, we do have what is actually not such a rare event with a 100-year storm, or let's say it's a 500-year storm, as that has been popping up with some frequency, and this structure requires an emergency response. There, it's not as straightforward to say it's on pilings, nothing will happen. Let's say the vehicle parked underneath floats away, and we have a motor oil spill. Let's say that the septic system is submerged underwater for two weeks, and we have a nitrogen and phosphorus issue leaching into the riverfront. And so respectfully, I would say that the purpose of zoning largely why it's been upheld for, you know, as a police protection of a municipality is for the health, safety, and welfare. And I just don't see how building in the floodplain is responsible development.
Thank you, Ms. Starling. If I might try and respond to your question. The regulation of floodplain under zoning is duplicative of the regulation of floodplain under the state building code as well under the state Wetlands Protection Act. And by demonstrating compliance with the state building code requirements, which incorporate, as I mentioned, the FEMA requirements, we've demonstrated that you can build a safe structure that will not cause additional flooding impacts. And that was confirmed by review by the Conservation Commission. Now, it's perfectly appropriate for this board to condition a project, and I've had boards condition floodplain projects, which would, for example, require the removal of automobiles during a major storm event to prevent any automobiles to be flooded, and I guess potentially the release of oils or gasoline from those vehicles.
But again, if your argument is that you're coming here for a variance because it's located in the floodplain, and theoretically, I assume that your argument is based on soil conditions. So you're arguing that your floodplain soil conditions are your hardship and why you should not build a structure when those soil conditions are the very... There's a reason for these rules.
Thank you. So, and, and I'm very respectful of that. You don't want any public safety threats. As David will explain, there will be no public safety threats associated with the construction, like modest-sized, single-family dwelling within the floodplain. The building code allows construction within the floodplain. The State Wetlands Protection Act allows construction within the floodplain. FEMA, which standards are incorporated within the state building code, allows construction in the floodplain, and they do that because you can safely build in the floodplain. And I think the unique circumstances which give rise and support of variance in this instance are not only the soil conditions. The unique conditions here is you have a lot which would otherwise be buildable, but for this variance. And I do know that this board has granted variances for lots that would otherwise not be buildable on account of things such as...
But you also know that that does not, but you also know that those decisions are not precedent-setting. And so the fact that prior boards have granted variances in this case is not necessarily a convincing argument moving forward.
Ms. Starling, I don't disagree with what you're saying. Every site is different. And the point I was making that there's recognition by this board that, that there are unique circumstances which allow the granting of variances to allow construction, again, for a single-family home.
But I'm not, but it's soil, it's shape of the lot, or topography. It's not financial hardship. We, we know that as well.
That's a separate element.
Yeah, but that's more or less what you're arguing when you're saying it's otherwise a buildable lot, because it's not really a huge hardship to the great people of Norfolk if the single-family home does not exist. That's a hardship to the applicant, and that hardship is financial.
So, so I'm happy to address the hardship element. I was talking about the unique conditions relating to this particular lot, including physical conditions, as well as its unique zoning status, which satisfy that element. With respect to substantial hardship, obviously, the denial of a variance would preclude the development which would have a financial impact on the, on the applicant. I would say that there are broader impacts, which I've addressed in my letter. The denial of additional tax, taxes to the town, and in this instance, a denial of one additional housing unit when in the Commonwealth and in the town of Norfolk, you have a housing crisis.
Our greatest housing need is for people who are at households earning 30% of area median income. Will this household unit be subsidized for, at that level?
This is not proposed as affordable housing, but there's...
Okay, so then I'm not sure that the housing need argument is quite the most, you're not, that's not the strongest one.
So can we have a, we have a question that Tim would like to ask?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through to the applicant. I happen to be at some of the conservation meetings just on other business when this applicant was here, and I was through some of the presentation, not, not focused on it, but had the benefit of that. And I think he touched on some of it tonight. My question really, some of the issues, not really the hardship type thing, but getting back to the, the floodplain and the safety. I think the applicant paid for a beta report or a beta review. You've mentioned beta. You mentioned it the other night or something, and you mentioned it tonight. I just didn't know if you actually had the, the letter or the, to get into the record, because they talked about safety and things like that for conservation. So I thought that would be helpful to us, too, if you had.
Who paid Concom or the applicant? Was that peer review by Beta, or was that...
It was pure, the applicant paid for both, peer review on behalf of the conservation.
Mr. Martin, it's Adam Brodsky. We have to provide that information to the board.
Through the chair, I already submitted that.
I did, I did see that.
It's been submitted. I had a two-page summation, and I also had the six-page from Beta, and they actually were on the conservation meeting. You can actually see the owner of Beta as he talks for 10, 12 minutes on the subject, if you wanted to review film.
Thank you. Just a technical for the attorney on the memo, it's not, it may be off-base, but just for clarification when you, for the record, just so I'm clear, on the site here on Locust, we talk about his lots, 8358, 359, and 360, and I think the representation, I'm not challenging, just clarification. Those three parcels, there was nothing ever added to that or taken away from that, those been three, because it's just confusing. It says they were combined and held in separate ownership, but the separate ownership is from everything around it. Those three were combined prior to zoning and held in separate ownership from everything else. Is that the reading of that?
That is, that is...
All right, just so I understood.
Yes, sir. And again, this is a land court, and so I provided you with reference to both the land court plan as well as the certificate of title.
Right. Thank you.
Through the chair, those lots were cottage-type style lots, meant for a cottage to be enjoying nature and enjoying the river, back when they were created in '45, right after the war got over.
Anybody have any questions, any homeowners present?
Any questions? And there was that one letter of support from, we have on the file.
Yep. We have a letter from 68, I think it was River Road.
It was another road.
Five Lark. Okay, Lark Road. They are, they are our butters, and I did have a letter.
Chair Axberg, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Adam Brodsky. I believe the neighbor who submitted a letter in support is Janice Healy at Five Lark Road.
Five Lark, right.
That's correct.
There's also 60 River Road, is that a typo or...
I think that's a typo. I think that's, I think that was for 68, that's what we are.
Is that letter in this packet?
It's in the share drive.
It was in the share drive.
It's just a submittal, wasn't it? Okay.
So this, I think we're, I think we're good. Did you have a question?
No, I have no other question.
Anybody else have any other questions? Do you want to make a motion to...
Chair Axberg, this is Adam Brodsky, and forgive me, I'm not familiar with your practice. Would it be possible to get a sense of the board? We don't want to, we don't want to get a bad decision for obvious reasons. We don't want to be subject to the zoning freeze, and so it would be very helpful to us if appropriate, and I don't know whether you do this to get a sense of the board, whether they're supportive of this application or not.
I'm going to give that to Tim right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just another question before we entertain a straw poll or whatever council's asking for. Just, I'd like to hear a little bit, I'm fine with the zoning, but I understand the, your memo and the history and all that. My question is more to the substantive matter of finding either way. Could you walk us through again, you've got it in the memo, maybe you could walk us through the criteria and how you meet that criteria, you believe, for the variance request, just so we're clear on your position? Because if someone picks this up, we've got a lot of history here, which is great. Norfolk zoning bylaws are biblical, so I understand all that, but I think if you could focus on the issue, I think Courtney touched on that a little bit. If we can get some focus on that from you, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I'll do my best. I believe that there are six elements. The last three are really very similar, so we're required to demonstrate circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography affecting the property, but not generally affecting the zoning district. And as David has explained, we have a number of unique conditions relating to this lot, which are different than other properties. It's a confluence of soil conditions, lot shape, the existence of wetlands, the location within the floodplain, and as I've suggested, we have an underlying issue here of having a lot subject to the single lot exemption. Second...
So are these soil, I'm sorry to interrupt for one, I have a quick clarification question. So the soil conditions that are on your lot, you are saying are unique to this lot in the zoning district, and they are not present on the neighboring lots? Because it's got to be a unique condition to your lot in the zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that.
All right.
It is unique to us because our lot sticks out like a peninsula. The two lots on either side of us are both, if I could go approach a little.
Both of these lots are back in this area. Neither experienced the river flow. Our particular lot, the center of the property, contains hydro soils, wetland soils, a mixture of sediment deposits from fluvial flows, a bank area, a river flow channel, and finally land underwater. Our lot extends out into the river. These lots are land back in this area. They never had the flow extents we had, they never had the mix of the soils that we had, they don't have the same type of topography, they don't have the 10- to 12-foot drop tank.
Are they located in the floodplain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They're located in the R2 zone also.
Yes.
If we want to be specific about zones.
Well, that is a very important factor, that they're both floodplain and R2.
Yeah.
But I would say that there are significant portions of the R2 zoning district that are outside of the floodplain.
But the neighboring lots are not.
So when you review unique circumstances, you're reviewing those circumstances in the entire zoning district, not in the immediate neighborhood. And David, I don't know whether you can quantify, is it fair to say that the majority of lots within the R2 zoning district are located outside of the floodplain?
That would be a fair thing to say.
That would be a fair thing to say. I don't know, I'm in the R2 district, I mean, so.
And again, I don't mean to, would it, can I proceed, Mr. Martin?
Please, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you. Second, literal enforcement of the zoning code would involve substantial hardship, financial, otherwise, and obviously, there would be financial hardship to the property owner if they're unable to develop this. And as I said, suggested, and I know that Ms. Starling disagrees with me, but I'd suggest that there's value to the town to have another housing unit, because I don't think that the housing crisis is limited only to affordable housing.
I disagree primarily that financial hardship is a consideration under zoning, under 40A for a variance. That's my main disagreement. We can go, we can go back and forth on the rest of it, but I...
It actually is an element under 40A, Section 6. And third, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying from the intent of the zoning code. And as David has explained, by building this house in conformance with the state building code, FEMA requirements, the State Wetlands Protection Act, as well as Title Five, that in and of itself assures that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good. As I mentioned, if you have a particular concern with respect to parking cars in the floodplain, it would be perfectly appropriate to condition the grant of a variance on having the landowner, the homeowner, remove a car during a major storm event. It seems like common sense to me, but that certainly could be a condition because why would anyone...
I'm also concerned about the motor oil that leaks. I'm concerned about the septic system and the fact that it does leach nitrogen and phosphorus, and that in turn will go into the Charles River, where we already actually do have huge water quality issues and anoxification occurring and hydrooxification occurring. So respectfully, it's pretty close together, and regardless of the fact that it is designed to meet Title Five, these are still factors that are cumulative that over time are causing very serious water quality issues and are why Cape Cod, for example, has to move to sewer, and the rest of us will not be that far behind.
So, Chair Axberg, I'm happy to respond point by point to Ms. Starling if appropriate.
I don't think we need to, it's just making the point.
Honestly, I think you, 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 you did, you did your due diligence in the letter. I think everything's here that we need. I really, you have, you have the six points.
I do, I just want to, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant, just for clarification for me. On the, on the plan, if you could, you've talked about it, it's probably in the memo. Could you just, for me or anybody else, just clarify the shape, and again, the topography, you talked about the grade, just so I'm clear about that. We've talked a little bit about soil, I think I understand that, but you mentioned topography and shape.
Elena, can you zoom out? Do we see the whole lot, or do we just, or is this a partial site plan?
I don't know, you'll see the whole thing.
Okey-dokey.
And maybe, however you want to present, whether it's relative to the butters or however you want to present it.
Yep.
It's kind of too small, though.
So, yeah, if you could kind of point out the property line, you say it goes into the river?
See, it says property line.
Yep.
And this is the other property line. This is the main annual high-water line of the Charles River. This is the riverfront line, the bank that was delineated, and the bank comes into here. Then this is a wetland hydro soil condition that we have, that we have land underwater. Out in here, part of this channel, because it actually goes where the old thread of the Charles River was, now it's in this section here. Up in this area here, we have a peninsula-like shape of the delineated bordering vegetated wetland. That wetland extends on the lot next to us, and it also extends on the lot over in this area. The 100-foot riverfront from the bank is delineated by this line right here.
Okay.
The 200 is back in this area here, now, this is still a little lower, but the river itself flows out in here and our property extends to the river. So all of this part of the lot is underwater or it's a wetland. It's underwater at various times of the year when the river does rise. Then the trees are called up that are on the plan. The 50-foot bordering vegetated wetland line is in here, and then the 100-foot is down in this area here. So it leaves a small pocket up in this area. Here's the 200-foot riparian line. And between the 100 and 200, you can use up to 10% to 15% of the lot, and the rest of it has to remain natural the way that it is. And outside of that, we're outside of the 100, we're outside of the 200 down here where the septic would go. So the septic's outside the 100-foot line of the wetland, and it's outside the 200-foot riparian. Much like other lots that would be in the R2 that need a septic system.
Where is, where is the structure here? Because it's...
The structure is right here, it's highlighted in orange.
So that's between the 100 and the 200-foot butter, or...
That's correct. Now, it could be moved, if we were given a variance, we would move it up almost to the street.
That was giving my question, David, if you, if, let's say there's no setbacks, right? Requirement, I know you've looked at this thing, not ways of...
Oh, no, I'd like to move it up to here. 20, 15 feet from the roadway.
And request a setback variance.
Yeah, it's going to be the same variance argument for both.
Right, I mean, so then the septic tank itself would come over into this area here, you know, and then the building would come down to here. There's small, little, tiny decks, because we don't want to disturb too much, we have less of an area here, but if we were able to, this could move up into this area, then our, then we'd be almost, completely outside the 200 riparian zone, and we'd definitely be outside the 100-foot buffer zone. So we wouldn't be even in the buffer, and we wouldn't be in the riverfront riparian zone.
This is for how many bedrooms?
This is for a three-bedroom house. It's a single family.
Yeah, moving it up is your better option.
And, you know, it's just like, if you're in North Carolina, you're going to golf vacation, go wherever, you park your cars underneath, there's an area to put the vehicles under. It would keep snow off them, it would keep weather conditions off them, leaves wouldn't be on them, sap wouldn't be on them, there's a lot of pine on this lot. The major trees are all shown on here to be, you know, kept, there's only a few that will be removed, they're shown in the areas where they are.
David, could you, could you just explain again, you mentioned the steep grade somewhere?
Yes, in this, in this area here, from where our, our edge of our bordering vegetated wetland up into the area, this one does not have the topography on it, but right in this area here is elevation 135 and AVD 88. Over in this area here, it goes to 124. The bankens, if you go and walk the site, it's six-to-eight-foot drop to get down to the river. The river has carved out over thousands of years, those banks. Over on some of these other lots, as you go further down, they can gently walk right into the river, or just take a canoe in, or take in any type of apparatus or any type of watercraft that they want to, and get right into the river. On ours, it's steep and it drops right down, so it's almost like we're on a raised plateau, and then the plateau comes back this way with the topography, but again, a lot of the topography is underwater, the rest of it's in the wetland, then they'll have the buffer zones. There's a lot in this area that's going to, you know, remain natural, or it's going to be a hydro soil.
So basically, the land is elevated from where the water?
The land is elevated here, but if we ever get eight-and-a-half inches of rain in 24 hours, which is what a 100-year storm is, they say that the backup caused by bridges and other things along the Charles River, because it doesn't have the flexibility when we had horse and carriage, where you just took the carriage through, the river would flow a lot easier, and all the houses that are built along it. What it does cause, it causes the water to come up and go over here, and it goes over the whole, the whole airfield and everything across the street.
Where's your closest to butter?
Correctly, there's, there's a house at 60, and then there's a people on Lark.
And how old are these homes?
I'm not positive, I can't give you an exact, but they must be before the floodplain protection.
They're small.
These are cottage, these are small cottage-type lots, that, you know, that there was no zoning, so a 50-foot-wide lot would work, because even if your house is 40 feet wide, you still have 5 feet to get by. But the owner from 45 was able to keep the three of them together. Without these three lots being together, you wouldn't meet side back, side yard, setback, and other things like that.
How close are you to the Charles River access?
I don't know.
It's probably half a mile to the right.
We have a zoning map on here. I mean, if the board would like to entertain the idea, here's, here we go. Our lot is here. There's three houses on Lark right here. This is the house on 60 that'll be coming before you, and here's some more that are along, along the river road. So 60 is right here. These are the Lark, Lark Road, this house is all up through here. This is the floodplain. It extends way out, you can see the airfield, the landing zone, it extends way out in this area here.
Is another person applying for a variance for 60?
Well, 60, yeah, there's a, there's a building lot there, there's a house and there's a building.
So just, just clarification, so 60 is, will not be appearing before you, so that was, so just so you know.
Yeah, so our lot is here. This is the, this is the thread of the river, and this is the separation between Millis. This is where the water comes in over in here, and it doesn't show it here, but water actually comes into a big cove in here, and it separates, and we have a peninsula-type of a property, which is unique to the other properties along the river. That's why we, you know, we have, we have 1.09 acres, because, you know, the owner kept these lots together. Here's the size of the other ones that weren't kept together. These, this is the two, this is the two, this is three, two, one, one, one.
I mean, I've, I've seen water in the airport in my life, so, I mean, there's, there's water all down there. There's a reason why there's no houses on it at this point. All right.
So, what's the topography like on the other side of the bank? Is it a skinny channel that's cut down with sandbanks? You got sand on, on both sides? Or is it flat around the other side?
It's flat, it's flat on the other side.
Because you're saying right now, the water usually comes over here and it wants to be here, so my question is, because you already are going to have a scour condition going on once it comes over here, because hydrodynamic and the way that it likes to do that. So it's going to keep scouring away at this and a road right here over time, and if you have inundation coming over on this side too, it's a little bit of a risky proposition. I mean, I know that, I like, I know that you're putting it up, like, I get it, like...
But I'd like, I'd like to respond to this wetland. This particular wetland over here is caused by groundwater.
Okay.
We went out when it was, went somewhat wintertime, and I had someone that only, Linda, went out on the ice, she wasn't as heavy, and she was able to get the rod to go down, and we shot elevations of the bank all through here, and then we shot elevations here, and we were anywhere from 2/10 to a foot, foot and a half higher. So groundwater was breaking out and making its way this way. So we didn't have the flow coming to this particular piece over here, we had the water flowing towards the river in that area. So it was an area that was hollowed out, washed away, probably a great sand deposit or whatever that was here that's gone, and what's happening is water is breaking out of the ground, groundwater, and going this way. That's why we found models that's at 80, at 96 inches, because we're above nine feet higher, 10 feet higher because of those steep banks. That's what this lot enjoys compared to the other ones. That's what this lot enjoys compared to the other ones.
All right. Any other questions?
I mean, I guess my, through the chair, my, you know, for rules. My, my question would be, would this board entertain moving the house forward? So there would be less impact if it, if it wanted to put that into a decision? Or is that something that this board can do?
Would it still be in the floodplain if you...
Yes, it'd still be in a floodplain, but there would be less impact, and it would be, like, again, it would be further out of the 100-foot buffer, it'd be further out of the 200-foot riparian zone. The septic system would stay the same, because that's where we soil tested. But it would probably drop the impact from 4,600 down to about 3,200 square feet compared to the 46 that's currently...
You'd need an additional variance, right?
No, it would be a different variance. Just change the plan.
Well, it'd be both.
It'd be a front yard setback.
It'd still be the floodplain, but it'd also have a front yard setback, but it's the same argument that goes with them. Personally, I think it should have been, you were coming in anyway, it should have been the starting point to get as far away from the river as possible, just as a practical matter.
Well, like I said, the conservation, I can't anticipate that zoning will give me a relief, so why put a plan together showing the house way up front?
And yet, here you are.
But I...
Two of the house in general.
I was, yeah, but through the chair, I was told I needed to get at least a septic approved and a conservation approval before coming here and wasting the zoning's time.
Well, that's true, we do appreciate that. The, and we have to take this under advisement. I honestly, I don't know if we could give you a straw poll tonight, because we haven't really discussed it amongst ourselves. We're, this is, this is...
Would you like to do a site walk?
No, I, I don't care to, I've, I know that area, almost like, I used to hay the, the airport way back in the day, so I...
So you know where it gets, you know where it gets wet and where it doesn't?
Guy, I lost a tractor almost once in the, in some water that I didn't know existed.
We, you look like a farmer.
I am, so, thanks.
Chair Axberg, this is Adam Brodsky. If the board obviously needs more time to consider this, will agree to a continuance.
I haven't heard anything about how to mitigate, you know, interference with the water and maintaining the integrity and the topography of, I mean, I haven't heard catch basins, I mean, there's certain... I haven't heard anything about how to mitigate.
They did put, they did put in, that's all from conservation. They do, they did have some silt fencing and stuff, or...
They had a lengthy process through conservation.
I know.
Oh, yeah, and honestly, if I could, conservation still has some...
List of conditions.
Conditions or something that you have to...
Right, through the chair, what we did do is, we've located, we've noticed that water conservation in Norfolk is high on the list. We've proposed having rain barrels, 50-gallon rain barrels, at the bottom of every single downspout to be able to catch water, so if there is a water ban, we'll still be able to water vegetable gardens, flowers around the building and everything that are right in our...
Are you going to be fertilizing those vegetable gardens?
No, we're not, that's, that is...
So you can guarantee me that every homeowner down the line is not going to put in grass and true green kumon that, or put it, they're not going to put in irrigation, because we've got five water bylaws.
Through the chair, I can't, I can't guarantee that any other neighbor's going to do that either.
No, but the point is, is that you are asking to put in a new structure in the floodplain where that is a bigger risk, and that is, at the end of the day, something that is different between you and all the neighbors.
Anyways, I was, I was trying to answer the question about the water recharge, and we're putting rain barrels.
I, I appreciate that. Let's, um...
What's the, Dave?
Did you inherit this property? Did you buy it?
I'm just the engineer.
What's our next meeting date?
June 26.
And would 7:05 be appropriate?
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman?
Or we could do 7:01 next.
7:01, okay.
We're going to make a motion.
Yeah.
Should we let them know that we, one thing, I don't know if they know that we don't discuss until we close?
That is correct.
Attorney Brodsky, just so that you understand, a part of how this board operates is that we don't discuss or deliberate as a board until after we close the hearing, so I don't know if that's going to change your opinion on whether or not you want to continue.
Thank you very much, Ms. Darling. As I said, I'm not familiar with this board's practices. Some boards will give a sense of the board, some boards won't. Having said that, it appears, it appears to me, and I'll defer to David on this, that the board is looking for some more time to consider all of this information. And so we're happy to accommodate the board, if they would let more time to do that.
We have another...
So that's why we're happy to continue. I didn't catch the date of the continuance.
Well, I'm going to make that motion in a minute. Last question is, do we want them to do anything with respect to producing something that would show us the house move further, closer to the road, or is that...
I don't think so, I don't think that, I don't think that's a bearing on it, to be honest with you.
All right. I make a motion that we move the hearing for 68 River Road to June 26th at 7:01 PM.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
As a closing, though, this town, this property was bought from the town.
Yes. I knew that.
Okay. Well, if someone asked when we actually, the LLC actually got control of it.
2021, right?
Correct.
The answer was question.
Thank you.
I see.
All right, with that said, we've got Five Cottage Court. Are you here?
We deliberateed.
Or we're... We left it open.
It's still open.
We left it open until June 26th.
You left it open because of the question about...
Correct.
The, in terms of the proper request.
Oh, that's right, we wanted to iron out what it is that you needed.
Nonconforming, yeah.
Yeah.
Pre-existing, nonconforming.
Before you do that, if you don't mind, perhaps just open the...
Hearing?
7:20, and then just recess it, and we'll come back to this one.
All right, I'm opening, I'm going to be meeting this, the hearing for 30 Birch Road.
Okay.
All right, notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Law and any amendments thereto, a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, at 7:20 PM in Room 124 of the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Oliver Gazier, requests a special permit for a reduction in the front and side yard setbacks in order to construct a detached garage to a single-family home pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9 is amended, and Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310 to 6.5A. The property is located at 30 Birch Road, assessors Matt 19, Block 62, Lot 42 in the R3 zoning district. I guess I now make a motion that we want to...
Open and recess?
Open and recess.
All right, so the meeting, I just opened the meeting. So would it, was the next thing I say, recess?
No, just, just make a recess until, make a, make a motion to recess.
I make a motion to recess the hearing.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Excuse me.
Aye. All right, so now you can open the hearing of Five Cottage Court.
It's already open.
That's already open from last.
That's correct, we can get right into it.
All right, Five Cottage Court.
Aye.
How are you?
Good, I don't...
Please state your name and your business.
So I'm the owner, I'm Tom Burkhart, I'm the owner of Five Cottage Court. I was here last month, and we were discussing a setback for the rear and the front. So it was a continuous, just we had a question as far as from the building commissioner, whether it was a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, which she replied, yes, it is.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Five Cottage?
So that would just confirm that the, Mr. Chairman, through you, that the request for special permit is, is the appropriate relief?
The, the quest for special permit is the appropriate relief, yes.
Was that the last item we needed?
I think that was the last item we needed for that, we can deliberate for that one.
All right, so I can close the hearing, okay, just give me a second. All right, I make a motion that we close the hearing for Five Cottage Court for a special permit for relief of front and rear yard setbacks.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
That was quick for me.
I know, it's quick for you.
Aren't you glad you came in person for that?
Still worth to wait a little bit. All right.
30, 30, make a motion, make a motion to...
My claim for you was here at the table.
Sorry about that.
You do.
I don't know.
I make a motion now that we do open the hearing for 30 Birch Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
30 Birch Road. Anybody here? All right, come on forward. State your name, reason, color of sock.
Oliver Gazier.
Thank you. Oliver, are you the owner of 30 Birch Road?
Yes.
What do you want to do?
Um, so what we're proposing is to build a garage in front of the existing house. It was a new construction, so we have worked on this a little bit longer than we wanted to, but, uh, yeah. So the existing property meets within, you know, the criteria of zoning, so we met all the setbacks with that. And what we're looking to do is request a variance to be able to build a garage in front of it. And, uh, yeah, I mean, that's basically the gist of it. One other point is, in, I believe it's 2020, 2021, we did buy the adjacent lot, 32 Birch Road, which was used by the previous tenant of 30 Birch Road. They were using it till, like, they had built their sheds on top of it, and they had lived there for, since 1999. So when we acquired the property, I bought in 2016, it was a smaller kind of a house at that point. You know, we weren't actually aware that, you know, the previous tenant was using land that was town-owned, but we did end up buying it anyway, so that's no longer, that's kind of a moot point at this point. But, yeah, we, in 2021, we did end up building this house over the past couple of years. Again, it's taken longer than we've hoped. But, uh, yeah, so it is what it is, and it's really come along beautifully. So I was just at the lot property today, took some pictures, interior finishes are really nice. So, you know, we, we do feel like it's increasing the value of the area. It's conforming to kind of the makeup of the neighborhood, which, very small lots. With our purchase of 32 Birch Road, we're at 0.29 acres, which is around kind of the median or average for the other lots in the area. I think there's a good map within that application that kind of shows what the lots look like, and also, you know, where the other houses exist relative to those lots. So with our, with our application, I think we're around 12.3% of land usage between where would the garage be, as well as the existing house. And, uh, yeah, I, that's actually an example of another house in the neighborhood. So you can kind of see a visual there, representation of what the neighborhood looks like. Kind of small lake houses and so forth. And I think there's another one, I think on the page above that one, that shows kind of like a map, visual aid. Yeah, that's, well, that's, we've got to rotate that one, actually.
It's supposed to be detached. Yes, he got it up now.
Is, is it attached or detached?
Detached, yeah.
So just to clarify a point, it's, it's actually, it's a special permit, it's not a variance.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's a special permit?
Yep.
To put in a detached garage?
Right, exactly.
Now, is there, isn't there supposed to be a, a distance between...
No, when the bylaw was changed, in the, the bylaw was changed in the fall last year, the, the distance between the principal structure and the detached, there was no distance anymore. But in terms of, there is a separation, just in terms of the intent of it, to make sure that that detached structure can be...
Detached.
That is detached.
Okay.
I remember when we talked about the building separation, because we don't really care if you burn, if you burn your own buildings down, if you do your own fire separation, but...
Mr. Chairman, through you to talk to the applicant Oliver. Oliver, you, you mentioned the parcel, the lot next door. Is that, has that merged onto, is that part of this now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that map on the right kind of illustrates some of the other lots in the area.
The one that now lives, is now part, is that 22?
Uh, 30, 32, yes, yep.
Sorry.
Um, and I know that, actually, another abutter is here, so I, I want to defer to her, because she made an interesting point, that, I'll turn the floor to her.
No, let's see, the town's going to tell you first.
Okay. Okay, cool. All right, no worries. Sorry about that. Yeah, so anyway, I yield my time, because I feel like I've pretty much covered what, what the focus of the topic was.
All right, so, do we, Rich, do we do mean-average alignment for front yard setback over here? I can't remember if that's in our bylaws.
No.
Because like 22 is ahead, is built closer. It's not like, it's, in this case, it's definitely not unusual for the neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
Does your house have a basement?
Uh, yes.
So the stairs, the steps are on now, you'll have to remove those in order to construct the garage, right?
Correct.
Will you have a driveway, this is not like really a proponent of nothing, but is your driveway intended to be the size of the garage structure and run to the side of the house? Or how do you plan to access your house?
Yeah, it would be a garage, driveway running up to the front of it, with two retaining walls on each side for like water dispersment and so forth. But, yeah, that was part of the decision to move it up in front, actually, to reduce costs and land usage to put in a driveway, because like, we thought about putting it in the back, we've thought about putting it in different places, but then we ran into the issue of like, we're going to have this driveway running along so far back to the back of the property. But we've considered other places, and we would be open to other suggestions. It's just about minimal, you know, damage.
It's just more like, just the question, how do you plan on access, move your groceries around, get your kids in the car, stuff like that?
Yeah, 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 so there would be kind of like a walkway, so there would be a driveway leading up to the garage and a walkway leading around it on the side, yeah.
With like, okay.
But we want to, we kept it as a flat roof, actually, so we wanted to put a deck on top of the garage for, for like social gatherings and stuff, I think it'd be kind of cool.
The front yard decks, be neighborly.
So through the chair to Oliver again, just, I don't have the paperwork in front of me. Is it a one-car garage you're proposing, or a two-car garage?
Two-car.
Two-car, and, and the proposed height?
These guys would know.
You're asking for the height?
Yeah.
From the slab to the, to the top of the roof, it's about 10 feet.
Okay.
Single door or double doors?
Double.
Okay, two individuals?
So, what's the...
Good design choice. We don't, it's like, we don't get a comment on it, but...
It would have been a variance. Maybe you could refer to this.
Because of, because of street.
So, so before, yeah, before November, it would have been...
It would have been a variance.
Variance, correct.
Because, because of what, though?
Do you have, do you have the reference?
We changed the accessory structure regulations.
The bylaw, I mean, that we could refer to.
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
We were told to wait as a result.
If you connected this, you would have some different issues.
Correct.
Yeah, it'd be convenient, because then you could just punch through your basement wall, but...
We've thought about it, yeah.
Because, I mean, when you're carrying groceries, your icy stairs versus your basement stairs, one does look better, but...
Yeah, right, I know, I know.
I'm just going to share.
What, what doesn't meet our standard already? All of the, it's a non-conforming structure because of setback?
It's not non-conforming, it's by special permit.
Yeah, it's a new, that's a new accessory structure.
So the criteria is really, you could...
But it's a, but it's a new structure that's non-conforming.
It's a new structure that would be non-conforming if you didn't ask us for a special permit to relieve the setback.
He doesn't need a variance, because of the bylaw change, and maybe you can reference the bylaw.
It's different from the, it's like, it's a different tweak than the circuit that we did with the non-conformities, this one was the accessories. This one was the accessories.
It's 30 feet from the street and I believe it has to be 50 feet.
Yes, that's what I'm getting at. That's what.
The normal setback is 50 feet.
Normal is 50, but you're going to be 30. So that's why you're here for?
Yeah.
A special permit.
Gotcha.
To relieve that.
That's, that's, it's because of the setback. Not a side setback, but the front yard setback, correct?
Both.
Both.
I think the side is 22 feet, it's got to be 25, so there's a couple of feet there.
So it is a couple.
Are you short on the 28 side or the 32 side?
Uh, 28.
Okay.
All right.
The 32 side got a little better at least, but.
The deck's going to be, the deck is realistically going to be the footprint of the garage itself, correct?
Yes.
You're not changing.
No.
So there's no change there.
So you're about 22 feet from the side.
The ceiling or the, the roof of the garage.
Okay, so it's 10 foot higher.
Just don't put a grill on it and burn it down.
That's not part of the.
Yeah, we won't.
The special permit.
I have no idea.
But it's because it.
The structure's more within the height requirement.
Right.
Putting it in your driveway is cool, be neighborly.
Do we have any other questions? My, mine was just really, it's because of the setback.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I think we have the visual picture of the house.
Excuse me.
We gotta get, we gotta get a microphone to you.
We have, our tons of viewers need to hear, hear your words.
Well, my words, actually, because I love my Norfolk.
Very good, thank you.
My neighborhood, so, and it's a family neighborhood. And, you know, these huge buildings that are being put up around the place is getting a little crazy. But this house in particular, it's fine. But here we are, we have room on this side, we have room on that side. We're going to park it right here, we're going to put in a town under garage, with here, we're going to have a party on top, a nice deck up on top. Come on, this is country living, we can't have this. It doesn't make sense. How high is a garage supposed to be? We're putting in a garage. The town sends out a letter, a garage. Now here's the garage and we're going to have parties up top, so I'm not in favor of it if it's going to be like that. And I think there's enough room to put it on the side. And did you own the house next door to that as well?
Uh, no.
Far to that?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they renovated as well, the house, 34 Birch Road.
Yeah. And like, are all these houses that we're putting in, it's a new structure, you're saying, is there a brand-new septic system to this house?
It was installed in 2016.
Excuse me.
Are you going to be the owner, are you going to live there eventually?
So right now, we're in Millis.
Are we just doing flips?
We've owned it since 2016, so right now, we're going to make financial considerations. Like, we've, we live in Mills, like, right down the road, so like, we've back and forth thought about what our eventual plan's going to be, based on our financial commitment to this house. Like, we have to look at it from that perspective. I do want to address one other thing, though. We're not going to build vertically because we're actually deed restricted for the number of bedrooms we can have. So we would never actually like, build like a tower on top of the garage or something like that, so we can't have additional bedrooms.
Can I ask you name and address, please? I don't, I didn't get that.
Margaret Creelish, and I'm at Ten Ash Road.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So I'm right at the back of you, practically to the left.
Yep, I see that.
But to your point, though, I'd be totally, prospectively considerate of putting it to a different direction. Our concern with putting it closer to 34 Birch Road, though, was just about abutting that neighbor, you know, closer in terms of their setbacks. So it'd be kind of a tight squeeze to put a garage next to our house. But I mean, we really have a ton of, we put together like five designs proposals to try to figure out where this actually made practical sense to put a garage. And this is where we narrowed it down to, but we're open to other ideas or suggestions, just like.
Oh, yeah, I don't mind you having the garage, but I just think of directly in front of the house, even if you're going to sell it again, how are you going to sell it with this garage in front? You're going to block the view of the house, letting light into your own home? And then, if you're going to put that.
The, just to your point, I don't.
Deck on top, I don't think it's cool for the neighborhood, no.
I, I, I agree with the, the deck scenario, but the height of the garage, the height of the garage isn't really, it's not changing the look of the house, I don't believe, outside of that you're going to have a garage in front of it. It's, it's like basement level.
Built into a hill.
It's built into the hill, so in reality, you're going to see a garage and then you're going to see a house up behind it. Stairs, right now, you just see a house on a hill kind of thing, so.
I am sympathetic to the, I'm sympathetic to your concerns about noise because obviously, when you think of a garage, it's not quite the same as when you hear that, hey, they're going to turn it into a deck. I'm not here to defend his application because that's not my job, but I do think by putting this on the front, he, he is still free to build a deck in his backyard where he can also have a party which is closer to your structure. And so at that rate, I look at this and I see 34, which is built to the lot line, it's a zero lot line situation. If he puts his garage closer to them, it really does become, he does encroach on them in a way that is going to suck for them. If he moves it to the other side, it will suck for 28. And so I think all things being equal, if they are going to have an outdoor hangout area, this is the lowest impact area that you can kind of choose, unless you'd like to build a deck outside in the backyard and throw razors, but I don't think your neighbors will enjoy it.
We're probably not going to throw any razors, just to be honest.
I don't know what your life is like, but if they do, please call the police, he seems amenable.
Wouldn't go that far, love thy neighbor, but come on, really.
I've, I've, I've got a question from.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to the applicant again, there was a lot of, excuse me, there was a lot of talk back and forth and I think the applicant said, well, I'll do this, I'll do that. I just want to find out, is this the plan that you're presenting to us for this decision? Or is there a new plan or a tweak plan? I just want to be sure if we voted on the right plan, that's all.
I think this is, I think this is the plan that we're presenting.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have this one showing the garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the folder.
It is in the.
It is.
It says merged.
It says merged, okay, I can see it right there, okay.
Do you want to display it visually on the screen there?
Yeah, do one, could you do it one time, someone confirm?
Sure.
You want that first one?
Yeah, I think so.
Then I'm opening the merge again.
That's where?
Yep.
Okay, gives you.
Just to get a bit of a feel for it.
It's either.
The one that says merged here.
The merged one has it in there, too.
Right here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I had that open before.
But it's down, it's quite a ways down, it's all the way to the end, almost.
Okay, maybe look at the bottom.
It's, it's, I think it's below the basement.
Oh, sorry. This is the one that's merged, okay. I really wanted to get a better look at that front placement of the garage.
I was trying to determine how far off the property is going to be, but.
But I didn't think we had, you know, was that clearly drawn? I think at the bottom right now.
Maybe it's not in the merged one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if it's in the merged file.
The site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking. Because I was going through this before.
It's better than looking at the cars.
Unless you have a different copy.
I, I think I do.
Okay, then I'm looking at a different document, though.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's the only thing I see in this document was the one I opened up before.
But it's far away from my front door, and it's a big hill to climb.
Maybe a different one here.
I can't even finish. I move them in when it snows.
Oh, there's two.
Page 12, page 12 of 16.
That's one, it's just.
Yeah, this is the newest one.
Do that one.
Yeah, do the May 21.
Is that the one you're in?
That's one of them.
My garage is at least actually empty, like, it can accommodate the cars, I'm just lazy.
I have it right at the very end.
Well, I mean, have you seen the size of my barn? That would be shameful. You would need to do an intervention.
You have a very impressive barn.
It is a really cool barn, but you would need to intervene if it were like stocked full of crap. That would be a tragedy to every.
So this is the front of the house, the structure?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're walking right into the garage from the front of the house from up here.
Because if it's detached, it would be part of the principal structure, and then it would be a variance.
The front door is up here.
We don't have any relief for a, for a principal structure.
So you have to walk around the garage to get.
We only have relief for an accessory structure, so as long as he keeps a detachment, doesn't actually build like a magic tunnel, he's good.
That's what they, that's what they kind of show with the stairway.
I would build the magic tunnel, which is why we don't give me.
But they have a stairway now.
So you still see the garage, the house behind that?
I would create my own title issue.
It's a detached garage.
It doesn't really, it doesn't really block the house structure at all.
Do you actually see the front door, though, anymore? I can't tell, is that the front door there?
I'm allowed to like, share pictures or anything?
You can share pictures. Dave is the chair, so you just ask him, they're chatting for a second.
Yeah, absolutely.
Compared to the what, the 35 feet that the house goes?
Correct.
Yeah, how tall is, through, through the chair, how tall is the house that's there? Do you know?
Do you guys, how tall the house is?
Oh, okay.
It's pretty tall.
Depends from where you measure it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's true.
When you do the question of, was it the right height and could it, within the limit of all that? That's been looked at and settled, but I don't remember the number.
Okay.
Trying to get a, I was trying to get a feel for how high, like, if you look at the garage with the deck on it, right, figuring there's railing around the deck?
It's three floors.
Three floors, right, that's what I see.
Yeah.
You have.
So it's going to look higher.
Yeah. Eight and a half foot ceilings, I think the second floor is eight.
All right, so your floor-to-floor is 10.
Realistically, it's going to look like a taller house with the garage in front of it, even.
Right. Will you still see the front door from the?
Oh, absolutely, I believe so, anyway.
Do you need to actually do, yeah, I guess you need to do a little bit of, so your driveway right now just goes along this grade right here?
Yep.
And so you just have cars parked?
Right.
Okay.
If I look at that bottom view right there, it's telling me, because of that grade, the, the front door is still visible above the garage.
Yeah.
Chair, if I may, I, I just want to share some pictures of the property, just to show, like, we really care about design aesthetics. We've put some beautiful finishes in it, if, if that's at all relevant, by the way. If it's not, then.
And consider the inside of your house.
Okay, 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 forget it.
And honestly, the exterior really doesn't, we're just trying to lot and community and all that.
Going to the concerns of the abut, too.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
This is pretty normal for any hilly neighborhood.
No, that's true.
No, it's wonderful to get a garage, but I just have a problem now, we've got the garage, but we want this veranda on top, and it's like, come on, this is a city guy, it's country life, and I think it should be left that way. And if it was me, but it's not me, but to the, here's the front door, I'm looking at the front door, we have this much to the left, to the right of the front door, you have more to the left, it should be on the left, but it should be angled this way, so when you come down the road.
We've thought about that one.
Do a little F in the two doors.
Like, kind of an angle.
And the house is visual.
She is my hero.
Who's the bottom?
She is my hero, she is the only one subjecting.
Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Hello, yes, my name is Sue Phillips. I live at 28 Birch Road.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say how inappropriate this, this is. The house itself is very unfitting to the neighborhood, and now he wants to add to it with this humongous garage, which does not fit in with the neighborhood either. I, I think it's absolutely ridiculous.
Are you doing, what's your garage, 24 feet wide?
Yeah.
Standard two?
Mm-hmm.
24 by 24 or 24 by 20?
24 by 24, from what the drawing says.
That's a standard size two-car garage.
Sue, thank you. You have been heard.
What are they talking about?
I, I think we need, or at least, I want to take a site visit, I, I don't think I've driven by it at all.
I'd appreciate that opportunity, Mr. Chair.
So do we continue the hearing?
Uh, yeah, I do, just, it's kind of like, it's not perfect, though.
I think we should continue the hearing.
Okay.
He has pictures too, if you want to see them, he was going to show them while you were having conversation.
Sure, but I.
If you want to see.
Plug this one in.
Uh, I don't even, I've got a Mac, I don't know if this is gonna, got like a USB-C thing going on?
I still think I'd like to take a drive-by, just because I get to see the whole neighborhood and everything that it.
Okay. Is that a alternate material or is that?
Oh, yeah, that's on fiber cement.
Okay, hardy board, okay.
Hardy board, yeah.
I'm not that groommaker, where I'm just like, I'm just like, is it undershading or is it fine?
Sue, you gonna put coffee on? I'm gonna come by and take a look at the house. No, not tonight.
On a school night? I was going to say, Dave.
I gotta go home.
Yeah, good grief.
I got stuff to do.
Good grief.
Well, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing.
I think we should.
It would be June 26th at 7:10 PM.
And sometime in, sometime between here and there, I suggest that we take a drive-by.
Take a drive?
Okay.
June 26th, they're continuing it.
Yeah, to 7:05 PM.
7:05, June 26th.
7:05, it's fine.
Yeah.
I have not been to Birch Road yet, so I look forward to the site visit.
We'll have to set a date for a site visit, right?
Maybe some white trespassers.
Well, it depends, do you want to do, do you want to do an individual?
If you want to do it, just a drive-by. I don't think we have to.
Thank you. I always feel like a creep when I roll up and I'm just like.
So, let's just, do you need a motion clarified?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing to June 26th at 7:05 PM for 30 Birch Road.
With homework to the board to make a drive-by and take a look, if you can.
The applicant has also granted permission to walk his property, should we desire.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. Thank you, with all the public hearings, now we're going to move on to appointments.
We have none.
We have none. Deliberations?
We have one.
We have one.
If you want to do court of court. Close that hearing.[1441.56]
You did close the hearing, I haven't pre-drafted the decision, so it's up to you. You wanna just do it and then...
Whatever you like to do.
Why don't we just get the decision that you draft up for next meeting and...
Yeah, sure.
See what it says? Okay, make sure it reads right?
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Town planner updates? They approved the MBTA?
They did.
At town meeting?
Yes.
I was surprised at that, to be honest with you, with the amount of people that were there, I figured there was...
Good night.
Thank you.
And it did actually...
They, they did listen to me, finally. I told them, this guy's a humongous house.
I just muted her.
I wouldn't mute that, that's classic.
Oh, that's too bad.
Come on, let that be on the public record.
Party on, sir.
Do you have anything else, planning-wise? What are they, what are they doing down at Southwood, anything?
So the, the plan in terms of Southwood is to, is to, to work on a zoning change for the fall, which would include industrial, commercial development, industrial park, and then at the front along the street, in terms of Dedham Street, would be commercial out parcel development. So there is a pit being tomorrow night, public bubbling plan, if you're interested. I think that was in the, was in the packet, wasn't it?
It was, I saw it.
If you wanna, but there will be, in terms of, I haven't scheduled yet, but just kind of a touch and base in terms of the, you know, they have looked at redevelopment options and they're looking, they're, they wanna pursue industrial, commercial, which I think, you know, in terms of our amount of it, is on the less amount side, so this, I think, will be hopefully well-supported by everybody.
Okay.
In terms of that change.
Rich, I have a question, not, not on Southwood, but on the more recent news I've heard about, I don't know the details, I didn't attend the meetings last week, but, not specifically, but beyond all that, do we, do you know, or can you tell us, is there any communication with the governor's office of a possibility of, good night now, of the possibility of an executive order, that if these plans follow through, for lack of a better term, that there's some executive order on a moratorium for 40Bs in this town until we can manage what we have properly? Has that been brought up directly or indirectly, do you know?
The question's been asked to the state, we have not got a response yet, and in terms of that, I would just say, till we hear it back officially. I'm not really, don't wanna get into the discussion of it, yes or no, but the question's been asked, we haven't received an answer back yet, so...
Did anybody catch that the school cost reimbursement off of that is state median, and we are funding our schools under state median per kid, and we're actually going to make money on this? Has anybody seen that? Because I was looking at that and I was just like, because I'm aware of like the issues with homeless kids in hotels and like the reimbursement, some communities...
Do we know who these kids are that the state is gonna put in?
These are, these are, I mean, these are kids that are in the, that are in the emergency housing system for immigration issues.
So they, they could be foreign nationals.
So they could be, but they're all background checked.
They said it was 50/50.
Yeah, I mean, before you even get to sleeping...
Our school district doesn't have any foreign language teachers.
That is not actually something, that's not an actual consideration, though, because it's just like, oh, we, I mean, there are regulations about how foreign language education is provided, but to say, oh, I'm sorry, we're full of only English-speaking people, we're not going to take anybody else, is not legal. And so it's on the onus of the community to start providing those services. The governor now says that this will be a year-long proposition, and they plan to house 400...
Oh, a year now?
Yeah, it's some variation, they don't plan...
Nine, nine to 12 months.
Yeah, they plan to use it on a temporary basis. Quite frankly, I mean, in terms of facilities, it's a good reuse, what, like, I don't, I'm